Regular meeting to order. Batania, could you please lead us for pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And also, could you please help us for roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Felder.
Here.
Councilmember Agremonte.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barnett.
Here.
Councilmember Lowe. Mayor Dean.
Here.
Thank you.
According to last city council meeting, starting from this meeting, and hybrid city council meeting is available. So that for anyone using the Zoom link from the previous agenda to access, a new link is available on the current agenda posted on the website. If you are still having problem accessing, the new webinar ID for Zoom is A five six six zero zero four eight nine seven eight. Let me repeat it. New webinar ID for Zoom is A five six six zero zero four eight nine seven eight. All right. Let us go to the regular meeting agenda number one, public comments. Oh, yeah, I would like to, before that, I would like to, uh, the
Recording in progress.
Report any in the closed section. Today, we didn't have any in the closer section meeting, so nothing to report. And also, I would like to approve today's meeting's agenda. If any changes? Anybody can move?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Felder.
Aye.
Councilmember Agremonte.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Barnett.
Aye.
Mayor Dean.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moves unanimously.
Let's move to agenda number one, comments from the public. All this time, members of the public mean a comment on any item not appearing on this agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. It's your time. All right, looks like the no in this in the room. Batania, could you please check if anybody on the Zoom? All right, thank you. Let me in the close public comments. Agenda number two, meeting delegations. Okay, we don't have any in the meeting delegations. Let's move to let's move to agenda number three, presentations. Today, we don't have any in the presentations. Agenda number four, consent in the calendar, sitting in the council. We have the one, that four point one, adopt an ordinance repealing the Sonoma Municipal Code, chapter in the two point zero two, campaign contributions and limitations, and adding the Sonoma Municipal Code, chapter in the two point zero two, campaign finance regulations, raising the contribution limits to $500 for the both monetary and in-kind contributions. Assistant City Manager, could you please? Oh, this is oh, yes, this is the consents.
I'll pull up.
All right. Yeah, you want to know, oh, pull it out, because this is the consent. You're not in the calendar, okay.
Should I go to the public first?
Yep. I'd like to open to the public. We want to pull the four point one out. Let me in the close on the public comment. So then, right now, we can discuss agenda number four point one.
Just briefly, before you on the consent counter is the adoption of an ordinance that you introduced last week. This is a ordinance that imposes a $500 limit on contributions. It covers both monetary and in-kind contributions. The council, as I mentioned before, has already introduced it tonight, this afternoon. If it's the council's desire, a motion to adopt the ordinance stating the title, reading the title only, would be appropriate.
Thank you for your explanation. Yes, Vice Mayor, Council Barnett.
I move that we adopt an ordinance repealing Sonoma Municipal Code, chapter two point zero two, campaign contribution limitations, and adding Sonoma Municipal Code, chapter two point zero two, campaign finance regulations, raising the contribution limits to $500 for both monetary and in-kind contributions.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Felder.
Aye.
Councilmember Agremonte.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Barnett.
Aye.
Mayor Dean.
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you. Let's move to agenda number five, that is adjournment. All right, yeah, let's close the meeting. Let's move to special meeting. Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring Sonoma City Council Special Meeting to order. Batania, could you please help for the roll call, please?
Councilmember Felder.
Here.
Councilmember Agremonte.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barnett.
Still here.
Mayor Dean.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda number two, items for discussion. Two point one, discussion, consideration, and a possible action on proposal by the Sonoma Field of Dreams nonprofit entity for a three-year operations and maintenance agreement from the city of the Sonoma, and approve in fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three general and final budget amendment in the amount of the $35,000 for the first year of agreement. Acting the City Manager, could you please tell us the background information?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the city leases the Field of Dreams to the Sonoma Valley Field of Dreams organization, which is a nonprofit for $1 per year. And it's a 55-year lease that is due to expire in 2048. Under the terms of the lease, the Sonoma Valley Field of Dreams is responsible for the maintenance and operations of the sports fields and certain portions of the restroom building, mainly the interior of the restrooms that are located or situated on the property. However, Field of Dreams leadership has indicated that the cost for ongoing and deferred maintenance of the facilities has become unsustainable for the nonprofit organization and is requesting additional city financial assistance. The city currently provides funding to the Field of Dreams as a primary recreation provider under a separate agreement presented to the city council adopted Recreation and Community Service Program Funding Policy. And the city also subsidizes the Field of Dreams by paying approximately $23,000 annually for watering the fields. Last budget year in fiscal year 2122, the city provided the Field of Dreams $15,000 for operations and providing these core recreation services, and an additional $25,000 in funding to cover the cost of repairing an aging irrigation system and some necessary tree work. For this fiscal year 2223, the city has budgeted $15,000 for core recreation services, but there was no additional funding allocated for maintenance. The agenda item before you tonight is to discuss and provide direction to staff regarding the following four questions. One, does the city council wish to grant a request from the Field of Dreams Board for a city budget amendment of an additional $35,000 for fiscal year 2223 to help cover additional deferred maintenance costs?
I'm sorry, what was that number again?
Thirty-five thousand dollars. This would bring the total city subsidy subsidy to the Sonoma Valley Field of Dreams for this budget year to approximately $73,000. Does the, the second question is, does the city council wish to enter into a new funding agreement with the Sonoma Valley Field of Dreams for fiscal years 2324 and fiscal year 2425 for annual subsidies of $15,000 for core recreation services and for $35,000 for deferred maintenance items for each of those years? This would bring the total that the city would contribute other than the water payments to $50,000 per year in those years, again, 2324 and 2425. Currently, under the city council approved Recreation and Community Services Program Funding Policy Guideline, which was adopted under Resolution 152018, the city manager is authorized to execute three-year contracts with four named recreation community service providers, including the Sonoma Valley Boys and Girls Club, the Sonoma Community Center, Vintage House, and the Sonoma Ecology Center. So the, the third question is, does the city council wish to revise the guideline to allow the city manager to execute two- or three-year agreements with the Sonoma Valley Field of Dreams or other recreation or community service providers? And then the fourth question really is, would the city council like to hear a presentation by the Field of Dreams Board at a future council meeting regarding a master plan for possible renovations and enhancements to the Field of Dreams facilities? So those are the items for you to consider tonight. Based on current projections in the city's five-year general fund forecast, which is attached to the staff report, the city's general fund should be able to accommodate the funding requests made by the Sonoma Valley Field of Dreams. And staff will prepare any needed agreements or resolutions for city council consideration at the next regular city council meeting in August, if necessary. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Wayne. Any questions? I think it isn't necessary. And because, you know, out of the budget, just based on the previous, you know, years, what do we should do, and also right now, and after the pandemic, materials and the labor cost has been dramatically increased. And the I would like to open to the public, see any, you know, comments from the community. Right now, I'm open to the public. Yeah, uh, no, no, but also we can check in the Zoom, yeah. Okay.
There are no raised hands. Mayor Dean for Zoom.
Okay. If like this way, know any public comment from this room, and also know any of the public comments coming from the Zoom? Let me in the close, the public in the comments. Let me bring to our council and more discussion, or we make a motion?
I'll start, and, you know, I think the members of the Field of Dreams Board are here in case we have any questions. So perhaps the public hearing could be reopened again if we have questions. I don't know if we, we will.
Yeah.
And again, we're having this meeting as a result of my request. So thank you for whoever scheduled this meeting. Tomorrow, the Field of Dreams is having a board meeting. And at that board meeting, I think there, perhaps you could discuss this further. But, you know, for years, the Field of Dreams has a, it's an all-volunteer organization. They do a lot of work out there, providing recreational opportunities for the youth of the valley and from the region that visit our, our fields. We're so lucky to have the Field of Dreams. It was clearly a community-based effort when it was, you know, built in the early 1990s. And as a result of just maintenance costs and a lot of other reasons, the Field of Dreams Board, from what I understand, is just getting frustrated with the direction that the city has given them regarding other elements at the facility. And so tomorrow, they are having a board meeting to discuss potentially dissolving the organization and ending their agreement with the city and handing the, you know, for lack of a better term, fields back to us. I think that would obviously be, you know, bad for, for the city. And so I've been invited to go to this meeting tomorrow to hopefully persuade them otherwise. But I didn't know what the direction of the council or the, or the city staff was. I, I didn't feel like I could speak on behalf of anyone but, but myself. And so I thought perhaps we could have a discussion. And obviously, our interim city manager, Sue Casey, has put together some, some discussion points. And, but ultimately, that's why we're here. Obviously, the Field of Dreams, at least from, from my perspective, is a invaluable community partner that does tremendous, the organization does tremendous work for our city and the youth of our valley. And I think it would be a tragedy if the organization dissolved over, you know, over this. And so I just wanted to get the council's input, not only on, or I guess Sue wants to get our input on these specific items here, but I just wanted to communicate to the Field of Dreams as a council. What, I wanted to be able to, A, go to this meeting tomorrow and speak on behalf of the council and the city. And I just wanted to see what that direction was.
Thank you, thanks. It's interesting that, that I, I see this. And for me, Sonoma Valley Boys and Girls Club, Sonoma Community Center, Vintage House, and Sonoma Ecology Center, there's a vast difference between what you do and what they do. And I don't think it's a funding issue for me. I'll tell you what I think it is. I, I can't find your reporting documents for the IRS. And I don't think, I think they stopped in 2016. However, it may be wrong. I could be wrong. I love being corrected. So I know that you probably would like to do that. The other thing that's an issue for me, I don't think our funding is going to help you survive, because I think what you need is to actually run your organization like a real nonprofit with fundraising, marketing, social outreach. And I will volunteer myself and other services for you to be able to get to that point. That's exactly, that's what I believe you need. I, it's outside the realm, because the comparison with Field of Dreams, which you're absolutely right, Vice Mayor, is a wonderful service. But it no way in my mind compares to these organizations that you would be matching with a tier. I would be willing to maybe possibly fund the first year, but not multiple years. Because as I said, your issues are really with the, the organization itself. And after all these years, I feel that you, what you really need is help on how to put your nonprofit together the way that it should be run, possibly run. I think it's wonderful to do volunteer work, but there are other things you, you could be doing. I understand you want to be going into a huge program of renovations and things like that, but I don't think, I can't support that at that time, at this time, unless I'm convinced that you're able to really handle something like this. Because I'm just, that's how I feel. I'm a nonprofit person. My master's degree is nonprofits. I looked at your 1090, 10, no, sorry.
Nine ninety.
I990. I didn't get past year 2016, and maybe I'm wrong. But I just, those are the things that I've seen. So if you can show me different, I will be very comfortable. But I still can't feel comfortable funding three years.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Agremonte. I have a question. The, have you, you know, filing the previous years and the tax return? Or is it the status still is, you know, active? What is current status? I'm sorry, I didn't do the homework, just like Councilmember Agremonte did. Could you please? Okay. Yeah, could you please, yeah, come to, you know?
They're not even listed.
I'm Marty Herrick, I'm the treasurer.
Okay.
I have, I have degree in accounting and finance. I've run two businesses before I've started myself. So I do, I am aware how to run a company. We do put a lot of effort into this entity. I think a lot of the council members probably don't understand the background of our entity and what we do. But we are very diligent in filing our tax returns. We are active. So I don't, whatever information you would need from that.
Okay. You are active, that means the, because as far as I know, and you said, yeah, and also I have the, you know, compliance and the background. And if any, have you done a check with the Department of Justice, California, and Franchise Tax Board, and Secretary of the State, and also IRS? IRS, I know there, maybe you just checking in the guide star, secretary of, yeah, no name, yeah.
We file our statement of informations with the state of California when it's required every two years. We file our tax returns every year on time. I've not ever see the notification that we're not active from either the IRS or the Franchise Tax Board. So.
Okay. I mean, I, I guess I would, my question would be, what is, I guess, the point of bringing all that up?
The point, if you can't run a business, why should you get more money?
But I think the, well, and that's, that's one way to look at it.
Yes. You're a businessman. If you couldn't run your business, you wouldn't have a business.
So this is a group of volunteer parents that have kids at home.
Right.
That basically, from what I understand, do a lot of maintenance on our fields free of charge, like on the weekends, as, you know, moms and dads. And, I mean.
Last year in 2021, our volunteers provided over $43,000 of volunteer work, bringing down their own personal equipment from their companies, spending our hours down there because we didn't have the funds. You have to remember, Madeline, in 2020, the entire board resigned because of all the issues that were taking place here at the complex with the homeless issues. They were on the board for 20 years. They up and, they went, we went to a board meeting just to check in with them. They only meet once a year, and they all announced they've resigned. So eight of us stepped up and took over the position. We had to go in defensive mode right away because they only had a small amount of money left in the account. They were running at a deficit for over 10 years straight. So we had to cancel a lot of our service contracts and start doing all the work ourselves. This is how you run a business, to be survival. If I don't have the money, I have to cancel my contracts. We provided all, we didn't, we didn't cut back on services. We provided all the work ourselves. As a volunteer group, though, it's not sustainable year after year to continue to ask us to volunteer when the deferred maintenance on this facility hasn't been done since 1992. The irrigation system's outdated. The trees have never been trimmed or canopy management. There's a lot of things out there that that infrastructure is done. So we need to, for it to be sustainable, we need to outsource more of our services to people that are contractors and know how to do the work. Okay? And that's what we're trying to do here. I mean, we have, we have over $70,000 of deferred maintenance sitting there. That's just, hasn't been done. You know, we want to start outsourcing. We were doing, we were cleaning the bathrooms ourselves. We need, we outsourced that. We were doing the cutting of the fields and landscaping ourselves. So I think we've done a pretty good job of running this from what we had, and we're going in the right direction. Then COVID hit, you know, and we didn't have any revenue from our youth organizations. So there's over 2,000 kids that use that facility. So I kind of take a little bit of offense when I'm being told I don't know how to run the business. We are getting there. You know, it takes a while. We got a website, we're just getting established. We are going to start doing more marketing and fundraising. But that's not going to get us to a position of a cash flow for our operations to fund these other deferred maintenance. That's why we're here asking, one, to cover deferred maintenance, two, give us the ability not to have to volunteer so much and spend more time with our families. So we can outsource more of these services. That's all we're asking for. We are develop, we are developing more operational and business plans as we go, so.
Well, that's exactly what I'm asking for. For you to be able to be viable as a nonprofit. And I think it's wonderful that people, that you have volunteers. And those are actually bookable hours. You're, it's like a non-paid staff.
Yeah.
So as I said, I would be more comfortable if I saw that you had recent I990. I guess it would be for 20? Would it be 20 or 21?
Yeah, 2020, yeah, 2020. I'm not sure what kind of the, your calendar year or fiscal year you're filing the cycle?
We're fiscal year.
Okay, so the, the, starting from the July 1st.
Yes, correct.
Okay. I have a question. How much money for the last fiscal year you raised the money, including cities and support, $15,000? How much?
So I wasn't prepared for this because I thought we're going to come back to August 3rd meeting to go over the pro forma, which I actually, just so you know, I turned that in last November. And why we're standing here talking about today is, is, you know, it's been a long, arduous process because I came to the, to the city manager back in November of last year. I re-upped our pro forma that I provided in February. I provided the bids for all our deferred maintenance in March. And then from March to now, it went silent. And I just found out on May 27th that we're only going to be included for $15,000 and not the 50 you requested, that we'd have to then come back in July, have another meeting to approve our pro forma, and then get on the council meeting. So I was not prepared to go over our pro formas. I'm not sure if anyone shared them with you. I tried to put it very extensive.
You know, the, you know, maybe you misunderstand my question. My question is very simple. One is that the income, gross income for the last fiscal year. If not already, for the last fiscal year, and how about before? You know, most in the province.
Yeah. I can tell you, but I gave this to the city pro forma multiple times. So I thought it was shared amongst everyone, so I apologize.
All right. But here, my understanding is, the Councilmember Agremonte and support you guys nonprofit. But when we issue proven any funds and your status and compliance also is a number one important. And also, we, we are using the local tax monies and also for sure, we are today in the place because when we, and, you know, put in the budget, we classified as a nonprofit. So for sure, you are truly nonprofit. Nonprofit, we have the different factors to, to approve. Yes, yes. Basically, now, I agree, and also Council and Agremonte agree to support, just do some the, you know, the.
Well, I'm happy to set up a separate meeting with you to go over our financials because I thought everyone.
I just want the I990.
Yeah, 990, yeah. Usually, it would be the available and in the time, you know, so-called guide star, you know, websites, type it into your business name and the tax ID, EIN numbers, you can pop it out. If your income below the $50,000, it would be not simple. Yeah. Much simple.
Yeah. Yeah, our annual top line revenue is around $20,000.
Okay.
Then that was from the youth organization.
Yes.
And then we have the city contributions on top.
If not below the $50,000, that is a difference in the filing requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is a very basic. If not already, yet a lot of the time, you know, nonprofit, the short of the hands, know this kind of profession, the missed couple of years, return. Yes, always it happen. We just, you know, fix it and then let it be in a complaint.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question. How much would you estimate your organization saves the How much would you estimate your organization saves the city every year through your volunteer services?
Well, I guess that's the question back, would it would cost? I've asked this question multiple times and it won't be answered by the city. But I'm not sure what your cost structure would be to, if you were to manage this. It's not just cutting the grass and weed eating. You have to, we deal with over a dozen youth organizations. So we have to file, we have to have agreements on hand with them. We have to get their insurance policies. We have to do all the field scheduling with each of those organizations for all their practices and games. Tournaments, we have, we have six tournaments out here this year. Two of them are for local and the other ones from out of town that use our facility. I, I, I would guess, you know, if subtract your $50,000 contribution, you're going to be another 100 to 125. I, I would guess at your operational cost level, and I'm guessing, don't quote me, but I've guessed two and a half to three times of what it costs us to run it.
And do, does anyone on your board, or do you have any staff that's paid?
No.
Right.
That's good. Thank you. Do you have any, you know, person special in the charge in the bookkeeping?
That's myself.
That is yourself? Filing taxes? Okay, that's good.
I can't afford to pay anyone to do that.
Yeah, I see. All right.
But we'd like to outsource that, it's in my pro forma.
Oh, yes, yeah. Oh, yes. I did a lot of, you know, nonprofit local number for, for volunteer work.
That would give you a great insight.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that is a reason. If you have any issues, I'm able to help you to get compliant. Because this is my, this is my job, that I make a living on that. But for you guys, yeah, just volunteer. Easy, simple.
But so the answer might be because they're not making the revenue.
Yes.
You don't have to report.
We do report.
But we needed to, you know.
But I, I'm not, I'm not clear on that because I didn't find them.
Is there a form, I mean, I hate to go down the Form 990 rabbit hole here, but is there a minimum requirement?
It's a business.
Yeah. Even if you don't have any of the income.
I was just going to ask, is there a minimum requirement? Like, you don't have to file?
I just said that.
Yeah. Yes. Agramonte said, even you don't have any income, you are required to report. Even the zero tax return, you need to report.
It just depends what form you use, the 990 EE or the regular traditional Form 990.
That is right. That is right. Yeah, if the below than the 50,000, and you just, you can file the 990 postcard. Simple. Just list it on the income below the 50,000. But anyway.
I can show those filed tax returns.
Sure, yeah.
Here is how I feel. I, I'm sorry, I mean, no, yeah, I have to challenge you because, I mean, yes, I do. This isn't my money. This is taxpayer money. And I want to make sure that the money that's given to you is actually going to a nonprofit. So now I found out you really don't, you don't make, and that's fine. I've been a lot, part of a lot of nonprofits that don't make the, the minimum. But the issue for me is that I want you to be successful. You do wonderful work, but you need to be more on a success trail. And that's why I said I would volunteer to help you. I would get other people that would help you to be able to get where you need. I can't do a bookwork, I can't do accounting, but I do marketing and fundraising. Those are the things that you need. And I know the other organizations that are, have this, have that, do all of those things.
So they are volunteer-based too, as well?
It's regardless of volunteer. They have tons of volunteers, I'm sure, boy. I've been, I volunteered for Boys and Girls Club, not here, somewhere else. I've done, I volunteer at the library, all of those things. But my point is, and I'll make a real point. I will actually be willing to fund one year if, and you don't even have to show me documents. But I can't go any further than that unless you show the documents.
This is the tax, tax returns you're referring to.
Well, it's just an I-990 or the card that you said.
Yes, that's a 990 or each another tax return IRS receive it. And because this is nonprofit, is required to public. Anybody, and enter your name, your organization name, and EIN number. Tax return will be automatically popped out. Yeah, so it's very easy. This is number one. Number two, if you check the Secretary of State website, same thing. You enter it into corporation number, and then the name, it will end showing, oh, status is an active. And then if you go to further, you'll go to the Department of the Justice and also do the same thing. They will show you, oh, you are compliant. We already received so many years. If any year that are missing, they will show you this account is suspended or not active, but we needed to fix.
I just came into, came across that. I was notified by IRS that the prior bookkeeper did not file taxes for 2017, which I did and got them right back and filed correctly.
Yeah. Yeah, going to back and filing the back taxes, always, you know, they're not common, very common, yeah.
So that, that was rectified, but since I've been on the board, I've filed tax returns every year, so.
Okay, yeah. That's good, yeah.
Any more questions?
I actually think, I mean, I can't assume, but I feel that there's support from this council. As I said, I support one year only, but this council can decide what they'd actually like to do. I think it's a, it's a good organization. And to, in your benefit, to your defense, nonprofits or businesses, you will probably know that already, I don't need to say it. But nonprofits don't like to do, you do the books, which is great. They don't like to do marketing. They don't like to do social outreach. They don't like to do any of those things, so it's not uncommon to find yourself in this position.
We do have someone that's heading up that position, so.
Well.
Well, the Field of Dreams Board is, I believe, one of the questions our, our city manager has asked us to address tonight. They have put together a master plan for the future of their facility with a pro forma and sort of a, a business plan, for lack of a better term. And they are asking this council and the city to be partners in that effort. Obviously, they would like an extension of their lease. I don't think we can talk about that tonight. But at some point in the future, we have been asked to extend their lease so they can go out to our philanthropic community. And with the assurances, they've had an extended lease and, you know, all the entitlements they need for any improvements they're going to make. And so I, I think Councilwoman Agramonte, this, they understand that and they have that plan altogether. They, as Marty said, has sort of submitted that to the city last November and, and it hasn't really gone anywhere. And so I think we're at the point to sort of discuss that. And then just in terms of nonprofits, I mean, I guess it's just a different way of looking at it, like in the sense that, of course, the Field of Dreams is a nonprofit, but it is, again, a group of parents that are volunteers and they're just trying to, in, from my perspective, just working as hard as they can to continue to provide these opportunities to the youth of our valley. And as Marty just said, they are saving the city, in my view, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. And, you know, they aren't out there marketing and raising money because they've got kids at home and they're just trying to provide these opportunities for the kids. And they don't have, you know, you know, nonprofits are sort of their own industry. I mean, you talk about 990s, I mean, you know, the Tier Four SOS, all these people have, you know, salaries and, and, you know, in a way, it's sort of refreshing to me to hear just a group of volunteers, parents coming together to help out the city. And so I guess it's just a different, different approach. Like, I hear this and I think, oh, wow, I wish all of our nonprofits were like this.
Well, I do have volunteers, not just them.
Here is two totally two questions. You know, one of the Vice Mayor, Councilman Nanda said, you know, the, a lot of the passion, a lot of the volunteer work, that absolutely, yeah, they, we, we very much appreciate. But right now, we are an organization. We are a nonprofit. That is the business word or the legal word. We try to be, you know, this organization and the street, you know, that is. Because, I know, this organization's mission, it's the value, everybody agree, you know, we work for that. But I believe if the, our city council were agree this, this additional fund, basically, I personally agree and this kind of fund, whatever, in one year or three years. But before that, we need to go back and look at, it's the status. It's a little bit tricky. And if not fixed, if it is not in a compliant, even somebody else, you know, donors, that made a contribution of five grand or $10,000 to your organization, they cannot issue acknowledgement of that. Which could have been used as an tax benefit when they in the prepared a tax return. So this way, you know, city government to support you and also to help you and gather the regular track, maybe just like you said, no, any of the problem. But we should make it sure, double check.
So I have a question again. So since I was, I don't think I was around when the agreement was made. I know that Mr. Stone and Carolyn Stone were generous enough to do this. They're the ones that found the money and did all of that. So in the initial agreement, is that their commitment to do the, take care of the field and all of that other stuff? I don't know who has an answer to that. It's not anything that would change my opinion, but I, just, that's just what I want to know.
Under the terms of the current lease, the responsibility for maintenance is put on the Sonoma Valley Field of Dreams.
Okay.
Okay.
So we could always reverse roles.
Yes.
You could always reverse roles. Don't give us the money, you do all the deferred maintenance with your city staff. That's an option.
Councilmember Felder?
I've been silent, but I would like to speak on this matter. First of all, I think the city has been negligent in ignoring the item and passing by the item and not acting on the item over, over a number of months. And that's not the, the problem for the Field of Dreams. They've been left hanging there with, with this lack of support. They've been willing to talk about it, and, and so I think it's our fault for, for not addressing it much sooner than this. I fully support funding them for the additional $35,000 for this next fiscal year to handle some of the maintenance. And I would certainly entertain and ask for a presentation by Field of Dreams at the August meeting to lay out their master plan and give us an idea of what they intend to do and how they intend to do it. And I would be willing at that point to entertain the multi-year agreement to let them move forward and possibly even extend the terms of the lease agreement. I think that we, we should get a report from the Field of Dreams to, to give us an indication of what they're doing. But I think at this point, certainly I want to move forward with the money to, for this next fiscal year and then come back in August and, and have the further discussion.
Is that a motion, Mr. Felder?
I could make that a motion.
If you could make a motion, but I just in a person of one condition.
Let's, let's see if he does make the motion in, if there's a second. Then you can ask, you can make an amendment to the motion if you'd like.
I make a motion to fund the Field of Dreams for the additional $35,000 for fiscal '22, '23. And to consider upon a presentation by Field of Dreams in August to enter a multi-year contract and perhaps extend the, the term.
And I'll second that.
Would you include in that motion a direction to staff to work the agreement up for, for the one-year extension for approval at the, the August meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Does the second approve that?
Yes.
A real call piece.
Can I ask?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah. Can I ask another question of Marty?
Okay. Yeah, Marty, yeah.
You said that there's $70,000 in deferred maintenance. Is $35,000 going to be enough?
Well, we've been holding on to the, so last year's budget monies that were allocated to the Field of Dreams, it took all the way to this March to receive the funds. So those funds we've been deploying right now, 35, well, the 15 plus the 35 will work for this year, what we have scheduled for maintenance.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to say, you know, I view this very similar to the Depot Park Museum. It's contracted with the Historical Society. And just in our last budget, even though they are, per their agreement, responsible for all maintenance, we, I believe funded the, was it a roof repair or some gas line situation?
Air conditioning.
Yeah. Maybe the roof repair was somewhere else. And so on occasion, we do step up and, you know, help our nonprofits, so.
All right, we have a motion, we have the second. And we, a real call, a local in the first, but I do have the one condition. And we have another, second, an emotion or I can put together.
You need to make a motion to amend the motion that's now been seconded. Do you wish to amend the motion that's on the floor?
Okay.
So what is the amendment you'd, you propose?
I prefer, before the city release the fund, make it sure the status, the legal status for the Field of the Dream, everything is in a compliant with the, and the IRS, with California and the state Franchise Tax Board, California and the Secretary of State, and also Department of the Justice, that is charitable trust in the fund. You know, that is easy. You just check it and then everything is okay, boom, boom, boom. And then the, that is my suggestion. Because this is the, and also we should, when we not prepare this and then the budget, that is the, we direct this in a fund go to the nonprofit organization. So we should make it sure that is truly is a nonprofit organization. It's a status.
I'm willing to accept that amendment.
Is the second willing to accept that amendment?
Yes.
Can I also add some thoughts on that? So obviously, I don't want to argue against that in the sense that clearly I want everything on the up and up. But I don't think we've ever required that for any other nonprofit organization. And I guess my, my primary concern is, again, this Board of Directors is having a meeting tomorrow. And literally, I think the topic of the meeting is, you know, they're considering dissolving their organization. And I just don't want the members of the Field of Dreams to walk away thinking that, okay, well, we, you know, approved money here, et cetera, but we were like, are you a real nonprofit? Where's your 990? Do you know what you're doing? This is, you know? And I, to me, feel like we should be giving them flowers for all of the volunteer work they do for our community. And I just don't know what message they have received from us today. And so I'm a little concerned about our approach to the Field of Dreams here. And again, I, I don't even know what the direct, I mean, clearly, we're going to decide something here, but I don't know. Again, we haven't required.
Yeah, to be honest.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Can I, can I have Marty come back up, please? Is adding that amendment to provide or, or to, to investigate whether you've met all of the compliance requirements, is that onerous to you at this point? Or is that something you think that is a slam dunk?
I'm happy to perform those steps if that's what you're requiring. I don't have a problem with it.
And obviously, we want you to be compliant. We all want you to be compliant.
We just want to help you to be compliant.
It's more just, I guess, the message.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want you to go into a meeting tomorrow and say, oh, they just dumped this, another thing in our laps and, and it's just not worth it and we're just going to be.
I'm used to it at this point, so.
Yeah. Please don't say anything, just let the plane and I'll tape. We fully in the support, everyone that fully supports, no any negative.
But I want to remind everyone, I said, I didn't say that was necessary for the first year's funding to do this. We do need that information. And the other, it's, I mean, I don't even know what corporations do, but I do know nonprofits have to comply.
Yes.
And they're a business, even though they're fuzzy, you know, a lot of them are nice and fuzzy. We even have a FON nonprofit, so, and they are 501(c)(3). But that's, I just want, when you do go to the meeting, I said it's okay, the first year not to have to do with, deal with this, but, and I underst, I understand, but they do.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
If, if, may, Councilmember Agramonte is willing to, to let it go for this first year, and I would be, would you be willing to withdraw that amendment for the first year and have him provide that information in the August meeting?
Yeah, how do, yeah, that is.
I'm fine with that.
That is fine.
I mean, we're, we're already sending them fifteen thousand dollars, right? I mean, you know.
And then the, you know, if it's truly the necessary, we can have another special meeting, we discuss, give you the, uh, quicker funding also is available.
I'm just trying to keep it a little cleaner this time.
Sure, cleaner.
So.
I appreciate that, because as I said.
We're asking, we're sending money to a volunteer organization to provo- provide maintenance on our property.
That they agreed to maintain in their initial contract.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'm gonna withdraw that amendment to the motion.
Sounds like that's what the council wishes, and then we'll, we'll make that note in the record. That this, a motion does not include the requirement that they be fully compliant before the money is funded to them.
Thank you.
For the first year.
So, the, uh, Ryan, yeah, go ahead. So, now, clear? All right, yes, real call, yeah.
Councilmember Felder?
Yes.
Councilmember Agramonte?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barnett?
Hi.
Mayor Ding?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you. Congratulations, now Marty, yeah. All right, so then, let's move to.
Mayor Ding, if I may, uh, there's one clarification regarding this, uh, discussion. And that is related to a revision of the guidelines that the council adopted related to, uh, community service programs, and whether or not you have any interest in moving forward with amending that policy, or whether you'd like to keep the policy the way it is and address these issues on a case-by-case basis.
I would suggest maybe we have the August in the meeting, if not possible, you can prepare a staff report and see if anything we needed to improve or update, work with the Field of the Dream. And then, uh, we can, you know, try to put in a resolution approved again, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to actually look at amending the policy.
Yes, yeah.
Not just for the Field of Dreams, by the way, but there are other nonprofits. And I just wanna talk about how we treat our nonprofits. Obviously, we have these top four.
Yeah. Um. First tier, yeah.
Yeah, but why are those the top four? Maybe they should be, maybe they shouldn't. I just would like to talk about that.
Yeah, that's good.
I actually thought we weren't in the tier systems anymore, but maybe because they're all, were they all recre- recreation?
The, there were four named, specifically named groups in your policy, and, and those are the only ones that the city managers authorized to execute a three-year agreement on.
Oh, okay.
So, that's the issue here is, is if, if you want to revisit that policy to provide more flexibility, we, the staff can prepare a report.
And I would imagine a history of those organizations might put them there in that tier one.
Yeah. And make sure they have a Form nine ninety, please.
Well, that's pretty funny, but if you run a business, do you have a social security card?
I do.
Okay, that's it.
All right, anyway, yeah, thank you, everyone. Let's move to agenda number three, adjustment. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, it's time for us go to the farmer's market.
Oh, that's right, it's so hot.